Nope, there he is. He's coming.
Oh, yay. We were debating whether you were going to be here or whether you were on your way to Texas.
No, that's next week.
Well, that's what we thought, but we weren't certain.
So you won't make the road tour then, Dick? Is that right?
Pardon me?
You'll be here for the road tour or not?
I said I'll be back on Wednesday, right? Wednesday, yes. I'll be back on sometime on Tuesday. So. Yes. A little harder time getting out of the house this morning.
Are we all ready? And I will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on, Blair, Graylob.
Here.
Smith. Here. Daisy.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Just a quick informational, we'll have an executive session for personnel and that is on the bottom, so. Just wanted to let you know the thoughts. So that's for personnel.
So all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So, second.
Some motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard?
So. We don't have another one? I did have a little visitor to be heard comment. I just wanted to share, so I signed up to be a NASA Partner Eclipse Ambassador. That got me a bunch of free eclipse glasses and I'm supposed to be publicizing it as widely as possible. So I just want to let people know that in Clay County, this is your best chance to see an eclipse for the next 20 years. It's going to be visible in Clay County on Monday, the eighth, from about 2:30 to 3:30. It's going to be a great view. The public library has about 500 pairs of eclipse glasses available. Just stop by and you can get a pair, get a pair for your family. But it should be a great show. If you can travel for it, it's going to be great. But right here in Clay County, this is our best chance to step outside. Right now it's looking like partly cloudy, so fingers crossed we'll have some clear skies on Monday, but that's all I wanted to share.
Oh, well, thank you. And maybe you could also share what time you're.
Oh, and I'm going to be talking at the library tomorrow from six to seven. So if you want to come down, we'll have a bunch of neat hands-on things, including some stuff for visually impaired people to have tactile representations of the Corona and eclipse geometry and stuff, so, yeah, anyway.
All right, great, thank you. Any other visitors to be heard? All right, then we'll just move on. Dick Strasberg and let's see, Michael Smith on the courthouse security project.
Yeah, I can just give a quick update. Unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of movement and we weren't certain of that until late Friday. I think just with the long weekend with Dick, there wasn't a lot of movement. We do have all of the documents now that Jim Weidrich prepared. Now it's just really analyzing it and getting a comprehensive understanding. So Dick's request was really just to kind of let this sit for the week to let him get caught up and deal with the long weekend and then him and I are going to attack that again this week with the hopes that by next week, we have a little better plan. It does look, based off of the preliminarily, I think it looks like the information we received may point us more in the direction of just going design build rather than trying to make a hybrid model or going contract manager at risk. But that's going to ultimately, I think, be at the, you know, Dick will be the one to give that expert opinion and then an opinion to the commission as to what we should be doing moving forward to best protect the county and then also ensure that this project is done correctly, so.
All right.
It's open for better update, but I think ultimately spending the proper amount of time and giving it, you know, the adequate attention it needs is going to be beneficial for the courtroom security project as well as future projects that the county is likely to be doing in the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, thank you. So we'll have that on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, that's a hopeful plan.
All right. Sounds good. See Drew, we've got this second reading of ordinance 2024-01. And I guess we were, we were waiting on a survey to make the final decision, so maybe you can let us know what the, give us your impression of the survey.
I have no impression whatsoever of the survey. I'll turn it around.
Well, they, they don't have anything to do with the other, really. If we have to fix the road, we have to fix the road, but I think, I think we need to do the second reading. Of course, we can't do that until 9:15.
Ah, yeah. Well, maybe we can hear about the road then.
So this is Adam from Altegg Engineering. He's working on that project. The boring's a little late yesterday, but I sent them out. So you can explain a little more about what we can and should do, I guess.
Um, yeah, just according to what Geotech came up with, I guess for what we're looking at for pavement recommendations for that roadway was eight inches of concrete. At least on eight inches of base for that roadway. You can always, there was three different options, but that was the most basic option. There's an option to add fabric as well for extra stability, but that would be a county preference, I think, more than anything, so. And then, since we just got that late, we weren't really able to update our cost estimate at this point for preliminary, but I'd say we're probably looking around a million dollars for the project construction cost. So, we're going to try and get that finite. We're going to tap into DOT's website and use updated bid costs and try and get that as close as we can for the grant application, if that's what you guys are going to do.
Well, that million dollars, or I mean, I'm not, it's an estimate. Is that going to include widening the road?
Yes, yeah, we're going to make a 28-foot roadway. So two 12-foot lanes and then two-foot concrete shoulder.
And then that'll fix this corner also.
Yeah, we're going to include that in. Both intersection, well, the intersection of 313 and 456, and then we just have to apply for a permit with DOT to connect to the, to the highway.
Okay.
Permit to occupy the right of way.
So we can widen those out.
Yep.
Instead of making that loop out in the field, they can hit the railroad street. So DOT sounds like they're up for that. We just, like you said, have to have the permit approved.
Yep, and I've talked to Greg with DOT.
So we won't have that loop out in the field?
Okay, good. I, I had one question as I was looking, looking it over. I, I had thought I had heard at the initial discussion an estimate of 4,000 loaded trucks going in, but then I thought in this documentation that we received kind of late yesterday, it was talking about 2,000 loaded trucks.
Was that?
Is that?
I noticed that too.
A typo or is that?
I will check with them. I did not notice that.
Good.
Would that change your opinion?
For the concrete, actually, I plan on tapping into the local resource for the Concrete Pavement Association. I did that as well in Union County and he likes to verify, takes care of concrete stuff, so usually send that to him as well, so he can verify at least, you know, get his expert opinion too on, on the thickness, so plan on doing that this week as well, so.
And that's what we were looking at, right? I mean.
Well, I was going to ask, I was going to ask that question too, if we could build this just for discussion to asphalt. Is there any way to put the thickness of the asphalt to get? And the only reason I ask is we can maintain that. We just, we don't have the equipment to maintain concrete.
Yeah. Yeah, no, asphalt can be an option. We just have to have Geotech present us with what they want, but.
So it's at least a discussion we can have.
It could be, yes, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, that was the other question. I had was for maintenance, because we don't have any saws or anything to take care of that.
I mean, if we concreted it, that's going to be a long term. It's going to be a long time before we have to patch it, but.
Right, yeah. You're looking at longevity and maintenance issues for.
Yeah, I think it, even though we don't have the equipment, I think it's the best option. Whether it's what we're going to do when it was going to be an ethanol plant.
Was concreted.
From, from 50 up the east side, you know? Any other questions?
Other questions?
No.
Time frame. Say tomorrow, we, the county made a decision to build the road. How long will it take to build the road?
To actually construct it? They should be able to get that in the summer. So if we can bid it this, this fall, I was talking with Rod about hopefully bidding it with Union Counties doing a similar project on 313 on their side. So hopefully bidding those two pretty close together and hoping we can get some good prices with a good contractor, so. That's kind of the plan for now, but you really want to get, if you guys still choose to, to get the, the grant submitted, the agricultural grants. It took Union County until November to get that notice last year, so they submitted in April as well, but hoping we can kind of try and speed that up this year, so.
So is, is the agricultural grant, what percentage of the road would it pay for?
They have a maximum amount that they have for a fund and
50,000.
La, well, it was, I thought it was more, but last year they had three submittals and they kind of did some math and split it amongst all three. They didn't just pick one project, so I think it would depend again this year on what that fund is and who else applies.
Sophie's on Zoom too.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Oh. Sophie, do you have any information about those ad grants and if we submitted? You know, how, how long would it take us to get a submittal together and, you know, what, what we might expect?
Yeah, so the applications due April 15th and this body already adopted a resolution in support of the application, so the grant amount maximum of six, is 600,000, but it's an 80/20 matching grant, so you can get up to 600,000, but if it's a if it's a million dollar project, that shouldn't be a problem. And then I think all I need is a cost estimate to finish up the application and a couple of signatures. And if this fact sheet I'm reading off of is correct, it says that it's considered at, at the May meeting, so I would hope to know by May, but I could double check with Paula on that.
Hey.
Uh, the project amount. How much do you have for that, so? The, the total project cost.
Oh, yeah, could you hear? You might use the microphone, see, make sure it's on.
They should always be.
They, Sophie, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep. A total project cost, what do you have for that on the grant?
I didn't have anything so far, but I just heard a million dollars.
You mean for the facility, for the facility, for the facility cost?
Oh, okay, I think in some correspondence with Rod, they said that the the question is what's the total new capital investment for the facility? And I put 5 million, but if that's changed, I'm happy to fix that.
Can she write in excess of 5 million, do you suppose, or would that be a fair statement? Or just leave it at 5 million?
It's options, everything else, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so he says, you know, you could write in excess of 5 million.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
And the soils report has to go with that survey or that application, correct? Isn't that what we were waiting on?
So.
Is that right, Sophie? You need the soils engineering study?
I don't think I need that, but I think it helped maybe to determine the cost estimate. Is that why we were waiting on that?
Okay.
Okay, and then do you need something in writing, Sophie, prior to April 15th? From Altegg?
Um, if they could help me with the cost estimate and I also need a typical section, you all provided the resolution and then I just need a letter of commitment from southeast.
Okay.
Is there a template, template for that kind of letter?
Yeah, I have it drafted all up. I can send it out.
That would be great. So if, if we can pull all that together in the next week or so, give Sophie a little breathing room. She works incredibly hard.
Yeah, we'll work on getting that to you guys to Rod this week, that cost estimate, that section.
All right, that'd be great. And then we just all keep our fingers crossed. Thank you so much, Sophie.
Can we just get Altegg Sophie's email address?
Yep, so Sophie, would you, would you just give the gentleman from Altegg your email?
Yes, I can do that.
I think it was probably on that.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so Rod, Rod will work that out. Terrific. So everybody has what they need.
You said a million in concrete, but if we.
Yeah, there, we'll have to see if we can get Geotech against that asphalt number or the section by the end of the week. It could be, but.
In the short run.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Summer.
That was your plan, right? Build next summer?
Yes.
Unless somehow it could happen earlier, I guess, but.
Well, I mean, we'd do it as soon as we could, but.
Yeah.
But we're already April.
Yeah.
The bidding process is.
Yeah, that's the problem, bidding at this time, they sure everybody's busy.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah, so we'll.
That would address all the concerns about the soil worrying.
Hey, Richard. Should be.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, that was, that's included in this report and I was going to ask Dick, but I'm assuming with no comments that, that all these.
Yeah, I think that if we were to switch to asphalt, we'd probably end up with adding geomembrin and we would end up with possibly additional compaction work, subgrade work in order to better bear that load in the subgrade rather than the concrete itself. So I would guess it's going to end up being close to a wash.
Yeah, the biggest thing with the asphalt too is, you know, with that many trucks, you tend to start getting rutting in that asphalt right of way and intersections, you're getting that pushing, pushing of asphalt, so your repairs might come a lot sooner rather than later.
Right.
With that option, so.
Right. That was just a, I just wanted to ask.
No, it's fair. I mean, and like I said, we can totally, we totally can include that and then get that, so. See all the options.
With respect to the second reading and the zoning change that occurred this morning, or is?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, this is the second reading and the final vote.
Right.
Other questions?
Mold, does 2025 work for you guys?
Yes.
Okay, it does.
Yeah. And we're we, we haven't been able to commit to equipment now and for us to do it right, I don't want to force it. So.
Okay.
If we can add that baby up in the north by harvest 2025, that's a good thing.
Hey.
And that, and so if we start the project beginning of summer 2025, everything will be good to handle thousands of trucks.
Yeah, the good thing we have going is we have two access points, you know, on that road, so that will definitely help out with phasing and, and getting the trucks there for sure, so.
But I clarify, it really needs to be done by August 31st.
Well, if we can bid it, hopefully we're the first project for next year.
Got a gray spring and good plan, we could be harvest.
All right. So I, and I think Rod's, Rod's thought that he expressed earlier was, you know, to, to front load it, do it, you know, do it as, as soon as, as we can, so. Get it, get it on the early, or well, the winter agenda really for next, next year for bidding out.
Excellent.
Other comments, concerns, questions? We're all good. Okay. Then is there a motion to approve?
Uh, so was this the, we, we just did the test results. Have we had the second reading of the, or are we, are we on to that now? I wasn't sure if we'd begun that yet, so, yes, I moved to approve the second reading of ordinance 2024-01, so.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And let's see, guess we're on to on to ditch board.
Well, we got to wait on that too.
Wait on that too.
But we can do Rod.
Yeah. Hey, Rod.
Thank you.
Right.
I believe so.
We're just getting started, yeah.
Excited you guys are coming to this.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we got, we got some gas quotes here for the Vermillion Shop. And it looks like it's Jerry's Service had the low bid at $3.17 a gallon.
Move to approve the gas bid.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So I've been getting a lot of, I don't know, complaints, but a lot of calls, how come we're buying from out of state? Cheapest one we get. When I, either that or I have to take him off the bid thing. Because if we bid and we get, he gets the lowest bid, that's what I got to take. So, do you think we should take Jerry's off? Or what?
No, I don't think.
Because he's, he's been able to get us fuel when other people haven't too.
Yeah.
And he doesn't always get it, but.
Yeah, he's not always the low bid.
No, but I mean, everybody, few of them don't call us back, but just, that's what I've heard through the grapevine.
You know, over a year's time, it can amount to quite a bit of money, you know, it, this time it's what, 13 cents a gallon difference, but there are times where it can be more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is definite discrepancies between.
We'll wait till you get to a diesel fuel.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so any, any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the diesel quote is again Jerry's Service at 262 a gallon.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right.
I do have one question for you. Any problem with going to E15 now that it's available? We've been burning E10. Most of our, I think we only have one vehicle that might be older, but everybody runs it in old vehicles. I haven't heard anybody having any trouble, right? So I'm thinking of next time we get gas, asking for you, because everybody on here uh, Jerry's and Pollen, I, I talked to, they have the ability to bring us 15. So.
Yeah.
If they had a, did you ask about price differential between E10 and E15?
No, I didn't at that time. It, it changes about every, it seems like.
Yeah, there's a, it's going to be a little bit of a different energy content, right?
Yeah.
But it's, but, but we'll come out money ahead if we go with E15.
It ain't a whole lot, but.
It depends.
And there are violence change though on that for the owner?
I don't know, you know, we're just around the county, so.
Is that worth getting a formula on? I mean, I'm sure that's something that we could work up, right?
I, I know the difference between E10 and E85 is quite a bit.
Yeah.
You know, I know that when I used to have a few E85 capable vehicles, I would, I would consider that my E85 had to be, it was something in the 25% less.
Wow.
In order for it to be equivalent mileage.
And it was usually, it was usually close to that, if not over.
Yeah.
25% cheaper.
Yeah, it's in that range. I don't remember the exact number, but I, over a period of a few months and I buy you know, 1,000 gallons over a few months or more, and so I had enough enough, I checked it from time to time. Yeah, a fair amount of mileage difference, poorer mileage with the 85 at least, but with the E15, I doubt if there's much difference.
And EPA would probably have those numbers and we just have to do a little math when we got the bids.
We have quite a few of our newer pickups, we're not supposed to run over E15 and I just looked at my pickup, it's a 20, but it has that 7.3 port in it and it says zero to 15 is on the gas cabin.
Because that's all the federal government has approved. Unless it's a flex fuel where you can run E85, so that's why that's.
And mine doesn't say flex fuel.
Right.
Right.
You know, like the other ones, they actually say flex fuel.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know, that's why I've said, I tried 55.
I wouldn't worry about using 15.
And we were having trouble trying to get E85 when I had that 06 and I just going to run it in that, but they wouldn't just bring us 500 gallons.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And they're going to go away from E10. I mean, it's, it's going to be 15.
That's what I figured, anyway, so.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good. So the next thing on the agenda is the bridge improvement grant.
Yeah, I got a sheet here for you to sign. It's basically to accept the fact that we have paid 20% of the cost. And I guess it'd be like a committal letter. We did it on the other two projects.
Which bridge is this one on?
This is the first one off of Highway 19.
The one we just fixed the hole in?
Yeah, the one that we just fixed the scour on, now we're going to do the deck on it. And the other two are this year, construction, this will be 25 construction, we're always behind the, seems like, but.
We hope it's next year.
Right, right. And they're, the rehabs are, they're staying pretty current according to the other superintendent, so.
All right, so grants for 684,000 and that represents 80% of the cost. And so what we'd need is a motion authorizing the chair to sign the agreement.
So moved, second.
So motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Sounds good. Then we got the right of way application for, let's see, Clay Union Electric.
Yep, they're boring under the road in the condo.
And they're, yeah, it looks like they're putting in cable and they've specified encasement.
Yep, and I got to have the check for 250 for that.
Okay.
So I recommend you, I believe I signed that, didn't I?
Yep, that one you signed. The one that's not signed is the next one.
Yeah.
The Peterson one.
I wasn't at the other level. You know, I was thinking this. Okay.
All right. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then the Brett Peterson P B P Farms. Uh, right of way applications for ten inch drain tile. And that was the one that wasn't signed, so.
Yeah, and that's because they already get it. Without my knowledge or without the permit, but I spoke to him since then and. They already put the pipe under the road, twelve inch pipe. So they're gonna dig it up on each end with a ten inch pipe through the twelve inch pipe. Which I said would be fine and Travis and I talked to him and. And, but it just can't happen right now, of course. There's a couple of feet of water sitting in the road ditch right there and just make it worse now, so. But I'll keep track of them, so I, I recommend you approve it.
Yeah, that'd be an oversight on Brett's part, I think.
Well, it was, I thought you had it, he thought.
He had it.
Between the contractor and Brett.
Yeah.
It was, I thought you did it and he thought he did it. They got lucky, cause I told him, I was like, you're gonna have to take it out of there. And then they figured out that they could pull the ten inch through.
Right.
Twelve inch.
Right.
Like, well, that'll work.
Yeah.
But they still know they can't. And they'll have to do it because I told Rod's got to inspect it, so. They can't just tell us that they did it.
Yeah. It'd be an oversight. Brett's pretty straight shooter in my experience at least.
Yeah, when he called me, I was, I was pretty upfront with him that you have, you're gonna have to take that out of there.
Yeah.
Then there was a long pause.
Yeah.
So.
All right, well, making a face like this, I'm gonna move to approve.
We don't have any fines, so. Make them correct it, I guess was the best we could do.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? There's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Jefferson Telephone Companies applied also for a right of way approval permit. On Highway A four and it's for broadband fiber cable.
Yeah, and this is an extension to the one we approved a couple of weeks ago. The state wanted him to keep going, so I made him do another permit and there's one bore. So he sent the check for two fifty and everything looks good.
All right.
Cause they're, they're, we approved them all the way from Burbank over there already, so.
Yep.
And this one gets them all the way to the city limits.
Yeah, yeah, actually. To them three houses or two houses south of the corner of the golf course.
Right.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Some motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then a discussion on House Bill twelve twenty nine. What is, what is?
If you want to, we probably got enough time till you have to do the ditch board. But we talked about it a little bit.
Yeah.
And uh. I don't know, it looks to me like. There's a couple of highways that could be in question there, but uh. I'm not a very good interpreter of the law, so.
We've got somebody that can do that.
Yeah.
We happen to have someone on staff.
Your, your opinion? All right.
I did not go on and listen to any testimony on this. I didn't have a chance to do that. Sure. See what the legislative intent was.
That is really the question, I think. You know, I even had a chance to look at the new law that's gonna come into effect, the modification to, I think it's thirty one. Uh, I don't have it in front of me now, thirty one seventeen sixteen maybe. And uh. So there're gonna be some modifications. I think really the question is, is what's the intent behind it and what does it ultimately mean for the county versus the city? It seems like on, uh, my understanding is there's gonna be some changes statewide as to ownership of land that's touching municipalities. Specifically is probably what we're most interested here. This law will go into effect in July. The statute that's gonna be implemented gives. Uh, consideration to if there's disputes, how to resolve those disputes. So I think even if there comes a time where. The county and the city are in a disagreement, or I think it even potentially the council counties and townships. Um, there's a mechanism in place to try to resolve that. So I'm not sure yet. Either Dick, what that's gonna actually mean, or Clay County. But it seems likely that we need to be paying attention to how this law is gonna be implemented and the processes that we need to be taking this summer. Uh, to change ownerships of the roads that are fitting within, you know. My understanding of this law is that it's not giving discretion and saying, here, if, if you've got a road that abuts and it fits in the category. You're changing ownership. And so we just have to ensure that we're paying attention to when, uh, when we should be affecting that change over to the city. If that, if that time comes in Clay County.
This looks like a question that there'd be a dispute each and every time. And uh, and in case of disagreement according to the law, as determined by the Secretary of Transportation. Right. So he's gonna be a busy guy for a few years. I think, I think you're correct on that. It may take some time.
Yeah. And actually it would then be to our advantage to, you know, get it there sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, I think ideally we would come to an agreement with, with the city based on the clear meaning of the law.
Absolutely.
That would make, that would make life pretty, pretty easy. But man, if there's gonna, there's gonna be a dispute, I, I'd rather get on the front end of that list. On the back end.
And I'm sure there'll be a mechanism the state employs to decide how and when they're gonna resolve these disputes. And I don't, I don't see anything yet that, that indicates one way or another what that's gonna be, so. Um, a phone call perhaps, I, I wouldn't be surprised, of course, if this comes up over the next several months. Um, as all counties and cities are trying to, to wrestle with this, this is probably the very front end of, of. Conversations that are gonna continue, I'm sure, just based off of the, um, you know, cost that's gonna be incurred by. Whoever's owning these roads and the responsibilities for them as well.
Yep, and I'm, I'm hoping the South Dakota Association of, you know, county officials takes an active role in this. Um, I, you know, I think they did on the lobbying side and it, it would be great. Uh, if they develop some expertise in-house and we might be able to encourage that with a phone call. Um, you know, to, uh, what's, what's up with this? What do, what do you know? Be really helpful to have. An expert in there.
A fairly early request for Attorney General's opinion is probably, probably not a bad idea.
Yeah, that may be true as well. I mean, that may be, uh, and it's. I haven't dove into it, like you said, I haven't, also haven't dove into what the intent behind this was, but I'm sure that there's records out there. Uh, you know, that exists from legislation. That would probably be interesting to review just to see what, uh, the interpretation of the legislator was. Cause I think it passed unanimously as well, if I remember correctly.
I think that's true.
Left at the record of it and obviously was, was signed without any objection. So it seems like. The folks that are making this law, um, are all on the same page as to what they want with it. So we just need to ensure we're on the same page.
I, I think there was a couple of the permanent nays in the House that, that voted against it, but other than the. Permanent days, like as I think of them. They voted against everything, sure.
Yeah, and, and I think part of, part of the intent is that they're, they're really doing their best, um, I think to help counties out. Uh, financially. And I think this is, you know, there's, there's a pattern in, in legislation this year. And I suspect this is part of that.
I agree. I think that's true. Well, I, I don't know that it's, it's necessarily that it's uh. I think what it is is an ongoing set of questions that have been sitting out there unresolved for a long time. And it's just time to, to clear that up. I, I don't know that it's necessarily something that, there may be places where. Uh, the county may be, a county may be picking up, uh, responsibility for, for roads. It's not likely, but uh. You notice that it also refers to townships.
It does.
And it could be that there could be places where roads would be reverted to townships from counties.
Yeah.
Likely, but possible.
Yeah, it'd probably be helpful, Rod, to know what roads those would be for us.
Yeah.
And maybe to get that information to Michael.
That's where I'm, cause we have a couple with Vermillion that go right down the middle of the road. So there's only half of the road in the city limits, but then. And splits the bridge in half. You know. Other than that, the one I know that no questions asked is in Wakanda. From the east side town to the west side town on three oh two. And that's where, you know. I don't like that part, cause the, I mean, I live in Wakanda, but our taxes don't hardly take care of our own streets. And we're talking, I don't know, half mile, three quarters of a mile. We plow snow through there, we chip seal it, we make. So all of a sudden, that goes away for us, which it's a good thing, but. You know, when it dumps, Wakanda is about the only one, cause Burbank and Meckling are unincorporated. I don't believe it matters on those, does it?
I'd have to review in what's in that scope. I'm not sure. I mean, it, it doesn't, that, the laws don't specifically give. That law, the new law that's being implemented, I don't believe gives any consideration to first class, second class, unincorporated. So that's.
But that would be where the, it'd go back to the township, didn't it? Cause like township take care of all the streets in Burbank, they take care of the streets in Meckling. We, we have, of course, the Burbank Road, the one going north of Meckling, where the Meckling Road coming in. By Toby's there, that we've taken care of forever. That's where I don't know where this is going or what they're trying to.
Right.
To do so. But I just thought, bring it to your attention, that came up at our meeting and. Out west and it's like, I didn't even know that was. Up for debate until. We brought it up and there's quite a bit of discussion. Of course, you're looking at many, ah, Pennington County, Lincoln County. They're like, wow, they got a lot of streets that intersect with. Stuff where, you know, luckily we only got maybe two or three, but still. We've been trying to get some stuff changed with. Oh, what's the guy from Peter, Larry Dean, when we had that, our transportation. Planed. And we still shows on the map that we take care of Princeton. From, I think it was Cherry Street up to Highway fifty maybe, or maybe not quite that far. And I'm still working with him to get that swapped out, so it's, the city takes care of it. But when I first started here, we used to bleed Princeton Street because there wasn't nothing built out there. We used to bleed it all the way out to where they took the bridge out. So.
I think, you know, and I followed the bill right away when I saw it, it was in the, in the hopper. And so I was following it along, but I didn't listen to any testimony, just going the way I thought it ought to, so I didn't. I didn't worry about that part. But I think the strength of the bill is that it helps us finally clarify. Who owns each stretch of road. And like in Wakanda, you know, it could very well be sensible for. Uh, when we, when we maintain or we, we uh. Re-surface or other activities on that stretch of road that goes through Wakanda, that they own it. But it probably makes sense for us to keep maintaining it the way we have. But it might be that they're, they, they should have at least some small share, cost share on, on uh. Financing the pro, the, the work that we would do on that stretch.
And I believe that stretch is actually a federal F S A road.
F A S, yeah.
F A S, so I don't know how that. Been that way for quite a few years, it looked like on my map, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how that changes anything, or if it's a big deal that we even need to change. That's why I said, ask him. And, you know, he said it looked like it could be, and I'm like, oh boy.
Yeah, no, I think it's applicable. It's just a matter of determining what, you know, what streets, uh, it. Fit inside of that in Clay County and then what we need to do to accomplish change of ownership, anything.
You also have a small stretch in Irene then too, right, on the county line?
Well, that kinda ends, we end that right at the south side of town.
You do, okay.
Yes, well, at first we used to go through town. And then when they repaved the streets in town, after they did the sewers and stuff. They would come out to like the last farmhouse or the last manhole cover. So then the next time, Inkton County and us chip sealed it, we stopped there. And they've been doing the striping and, I mean, we don't plow snow up to forty six. We turn around at the old elevator and go back south, you know.
Okay.
But. Used to be, yes, but they kinda took it over now.
All right. So there's no action required on this now, but on our part anyway, it looks like you might be a little busy, but.
Just make sure everybody's aware of it and.
Great. All right.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
Have anything for me?
Thank you. I don't need to be here for the ditch board, do I?
Now you might wanna listen. Is Brad online?
Yeah. So is there a motion to go into ditch board?
So moved.
Second.
Some motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Travis.
We're in ditch board. Brad, are you on?
I am.
So I'll just start with, everybody got the email yesterday, correct?
Yeah, my first question was, is, is this a scam? I noticed some typos and. I wish.
So, yeah, I, I, I think that the gist of the deal, what, what he was trying to communicate was, is. Yeah, he ran out of money to pay his guys, he pulled off till he gets some and then he'll. He's, he's, we're, we're down to, unfortunately, well, fortunately, maybe. Few day, you know, several days work and we should be done. But he ran out of money before he could do that. The other part of the, the letter that, or what I kinda gather was, you know, like, you know. Can you help me with the bank? And I, I think the answer to that one is probably no.
Right.
So, the other part of the letter is just so that, that, that we know that, hey, I, I had to, I had to pull off, cause I couldn't pay my guys. Till I, I get somebody.
So we just got two bills, right, Brad?
Yes, so, so here, here's what I've done, is, is the, 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 the next application for payment. This is for work that's done. Um, and, and I made two versions. One version has some liquidated damages on it. Uh, um, you know, just a, uh, short of eight thousand dollars. The other one has no liquidate da- damages on it. How I computed the one with liquidated damages is I took. You know, because, you know, it says right in the spec book, you know, liquidated damages are not punitive, they're to cover administrative costs. And then the idea is, rather than having some sort of accounting of liquidated damage, uh, ca- or, of administrative costs. Will assess this about. Well. What I did was. That's how much we spent on engineering since December first. With the idea of, of an argument can be made that, that these are the administrative costs. I have, uh, uh, the one that I didn't have any L Ds on. Was cause an argument can be made, well, is this real, is this a. Um, administrative cost that would, would, would have been over and above had I finished on time. And the answer is. Is not as clear, you know. Um, would we have spent, you know, it, it, would we have spent more on engineering if he'd have been able to go faster? Would it have spent more earlier? Yeah, we would have. All of it, I don't know. Um. So, that's what I did. I will throw out. You know, one of the reasons I, I, I've done this is I have seen in my career where. The, uh, uh, a project, this was a, what, this was with a city. Where they went to court and frankly, the city lost outright, um, they only, cause they didn't have any kind of uh. Proof on administrative costs and they. Proof on administrative costs and the judge ruled for the, in favor of the contractor. So that, so that's why I'm always. Kind of leery on the charging a bunch of LDs because if it gets to be enough where it's worth to go talk to a lawyer. You, 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 you roll your dice on, you, you might lose outright or somewhere in between. So. What I'm fishing for is. Is, is, is really kind of a decision on, on moving forward, how we want to handle the, the liquidated damages. And, you know, and. You know, and, and certainly, um. You know, it's kind of. You know, I don't know. We have, we have a real big dog in the fight, but, but we, we need to decide that now because we're getting, well, two reasons, we're getting close to done. So what we don't want to do is decide on liquidated damages at the end. And then expect the contractor to write us a check because that might be a long time coming. So we want to decide that now. You know, you know, uh, I, 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 I have visited a little bit, so, you know. If you're. I don't think the entire, that, that, that if, if I had to go to court and tell the judge. Had we, would we have incurred this eight thousand dollar bill? If we'd have done it earlier, I don't think I could tell him, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't because we would have. So, um, then, then I'd be arguing on how, how much that would be. So we got two courses of actions. We can move, move forward and kind of, and go with it and see what happens. Or. And, 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 and another one. I hate to say it, but it's, it's almost easier is to, is, you know, he did the work, we'll pay him for him. You know, so far, but we've been fortunate is we didn't have, we had a, we had a winner where he could work. It's kind of hard to say that. You know, we've, we've damaged anybody or hurt anybody because we still were able to do the work. So, um, I think with a straight face, we could go in there wi- without having a, you know. Misrepresenting the contractor or the, or, or the, or the constituencies. Is, yeah, we didn't charge them LDs. We really didn't have. We didn't suffer a loss. That. That would be legitimate. That would be the easiest. And the, and the lowest risk of, of having to. Get lawyers involved. There it is. So, so we can go anywhere from zero to eight thousand dollars with, um. Zero being easiest and eight being the hardest. And I guess I'm fishing for input on where, where we want to go.
I'd offer too, just that you probably, you could charge it and hold it as like a retainer. And if he gets his work done, give it back.
We're still holding the retainer on some of it anyway, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I have held ten percent of every payment. To the tune of. Yeah, we have held, um. Bear with me. I, I have to do a little, uh. Looking on my sheet. So, so on, on the pay request, we talk about the retainage to date that we, that we've held.
And twenty six?
Twenty six thousand?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, you know, my, my sense is that.
That twenty six is a little funny. Uh, the actual, we, we, we have withheld eighteen thousand, one hundred forty seven dollars, ten percent. The other one is skewed a little because that has LDs in it, see? So the one with, without.
The lower one is.
Yeah, so, so.
Gotcha. All right. Yep. So on, on the, yeah, gotcha. The second one in the back end.
So we're within, we could pay this bill. The reason I, I want to do, I, I just wanted, we need to start talking about this because it's coming up fast. We could pay this bill and kick the LDs to the next payment because we have more retained in. Yeah, then we, more in the retainage than what we have spent in engineering, okay? But not more than the, 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 the spec book amount. And that's where I was trying to kick. I guess where I was going right away is, it is, it is. If he were to fight it, he, he would likely win the spec book if we charged him the spec book amount. If he were to fight it, he might win on the engineering bill. Or we can not fight and. Pay him as long as he finishes it. In a, uh. Acceptable manner and date and be done with it.
Yeah, and I, I guess the, the other question, and this is probably a state's attorney's question, is who, who we pay the bill to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay this to Northern Escrow. Okay. So I, I, I would make a motion to pay Northern Escrow thirty three thousand, six hundred, forty dollars and eighty cents. Um, which is the, the lower, the lower number. That's without liquidated damages.
Liquidated damages, the lower amount.
That's what us holding those back. It'd be forty one if.
Okay, forty one. Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Forty one.
Because I, I mean, Brad and I had talked and.
Yeah.
He's doing the work that we wanted. He's getting it done. Yes, it missed the December first deadline. He got lucky. I mean, he's having a, I'd hate to, I mean, the eight thousand is the, we're going to pay that anyway, if he'd have finished December first. Yeah, so.
Yep. Oh, that seems fair.
I'll, I'll second that motion just to get us maybe formally into discussion, but yeah, but I, I was, you know, in reading the email that we received. It's good to hear that you, that there's other conversations that indicate that they are definitely going to do the work because the end of this seems to sound like. If we don't get involved with them and their bank, then. Until the matter is resolved, we are unable to progress with the project and fulfill our contractual obligations. So to me, that seemed worryingly open ended that they were, you know. Just on pause until something that we don't have any control over is.
But the good thing is, if we've kept enough back, we've only paid him for the work he's done. So if we, if he just left, we still have money to hire somebody to finish.
Yeah. And at that point, I would think that that, in my reading, that seems to be a very reasonable use of some liquidated damages of, is. Having to go through the whole process of finding another contractor, potentially having to pay them more because we're a year farther down the road and. You know, having to, having to go through that process again, or, uh, is that? That's something that could come into play at that point? Is that the other commissioner's understanding as well?
Yeah, hopefully we don't get to that point.
I hope so as well. Absolutely.
What, what do we have? About two miles left? Is that the case? Not quite.
I thought Brad was saying he's just got some trees to clean up.
Oh, no. Um, so he's well into the last mile. Okay. It, you know, I was visiting, you know, you know, sometimes it's hard to guess. So, so bear with me. I'm going to pass the buck a little to, to my guy Jesse, but he gave me an update. I don't think he's got a, a tree removal. Two days worth left. He's literally with. Um, you know, he's almost done with this last mile. He just got almost done. And so, yeah, this is very, very close to finish. Even, but what I've been doing is, you know, I told him, you know, we're not doing these parcel. When he finishes a mile, we pay him for the mile. Okay? Now, if this were to go real sideways, then we'd have to argue on where at in the mile he's got done. So, whatever, but. Well, we'll worry about that later, but he's well into it. I also think. You know, he's been visiting with, you know, you know, you know. We talk and text the, the, the contractor. And, and he's working out a deal to get this, to get this done. My gut tells me we pay him this forty grand and he, he'll, that'll give him the cash injection to finish.
Okay.
I don't know that, but that's, that's what he's working on.
Normally, normally in a deal like this, if it were my own project and I were, it was my own money, I'd definitely say. Waive the, waive the damages. With the public's money, a little more reluctant to do that, but I think in this case, he's been acting in good faith. And I think that there's, you know, there's, there's other. Issues afoot here that we don't know about. We can't, it, it's not appropriate for no, us to know about, but. I think is if we can get the job done and not have to pay extra money for it. I, I agree that waiving the liquidated damages or cutting them in half or one quarter would be another issue, but another solution, but. I think we're moving in the right direction. Give the guy the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, yeah. For, for what it's worth, I, 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 I do, I do too, is LDs are a. Difficult thing, um, um, you know. I've had where we've charged LDs like, because listen, you know, this is a thirty thousand car a day project and you finished it two months late. I'm not, you know. Shame on you. Um, this isn't that case, that, that case. And I will throw out. You know, lessons learned on my end. When we do, if we do more ditch projects. I'm slicing them, I, I, or I, we should talk about that, but I think we should slice them into like one mile segments. More contracts, which is more headaches, but. You know, arguing can be made, did we make a project and then give him a timeline that was impossible to make? And I, I don't know that, you know. Or very difficult, unreasonable expectation. I don't. Know that because, you know, guy could have went in with an army and maybe did it, but we're going to make this easier on ourselves next time as we do another one.
Well, we did give him two years also.
We did, yes.
I mean, yeah.
So that, that goes into. That whole deal is you had two years. Now granted, you know, we, you know, it had to be after cops, but you know, you didn't do much the first year. That, that's where, that's in our favor, but next time if we, well. It was the, the other project we did, the other contractor. Finished on time, but barely. And he, he really hustled. So I think that, you know, we could make it easier on ourselves by making it easier for. Contractors to meet our expectation and then they won't bid in extra money for. These unknowns and we will get a cheaper product. We don't have to have these discussions. And it, it, things will be just easier, better. So, so I, you know, we, we won't do this one. We won't do this like this again. However, we got to get this one done.
Yeah, the other part of my reasoning is that it sounds like we didn't have any real extra costs because of the delay. To this point at least, and.
Yes.
We didn't have any real actionable costs. The only possible extra cost we'd have would be your extra trips to come down. Or to oversee and administer the project and, uh, it sounds like there really isn't any real. Extra costs and. Or if they are, they're very minimal.
I think that's a true statement.
All right. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. So we've got, got the motion to pay the forty one thousand, five ninety three and fifty seven cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Anything else, Brad?
That's all I got. Especially if you got anything for me while, while I'm here, anything else you want to ask me?
Rod, did you have something?
Yes. We talked about that lateral fifty. The trees from Yankton Clay Ditch up to Cottonwood. And I can't remember. What you said. I don't remember if they had money. Were they out of money? But the trees. Well, of course now there's a little water in there, but there's getting to be quite trees, quite a few trees and. Fifty water comes through the culvert on Cottonwood down to Yankton Clay Ditch. I noticed that.
I'm not sure where they're at on money, but we have to, we have to do that culvert first. For Todd by.
And, and that. That is at the shop now, so.
No, that one's in. That one's in Yankton Clay.
Oh, yeah.
The one Larry and I looked at. The corner, I can't remember what road that is on. Uh, he went and looked at it. It was, I think it's a concrete culvert that you couldn't. We were going to add on to it. Coming out of that hayfield. Two years ago, the, the, the annual meeting they approved.
Right, right. No, I didn't look.
But we were out of money, so we couldn't do it. So that's the first project that's got to.
Okay, okay. I forgot about that. Okay. Just keep it on your radar. There's.
Trees.
A lot of trees.
And we can drive those.
Two miles. Yeah, he should be able to get right down in there. You know, a few years back, they stepped that off the bank. So I believe, well, like the rig they had up on the Clay Creek, I believe he could just walk. Right down one side and do it and come back up the other side, I think. I guess I. Passing, I just noticed all the trees there.
He can climb quite a bit.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand. That's about what that culvert is probably going to cost to get put in.
Yeah, because if I remember right, that was fairly big. Right? That a forty eight inch or was it an arch one? I can't, we're going to have to go look at it again. I forgot about that actually.
And they left their assessments alone, so. Is that a call, so?
All right, that's all I had.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to come on a ditch board.
To come on a ditch board.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're in regular session.
All right.
I'm going to disconnect then. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brad. So, oh, can we get that check sent out today then?
I just had the one item that was, uh, we're trying to do some house cleaning around the building here before we might be moving out and. We have a tendency to be pack rats and reuse things as much as we can and hang on to things probably longer than we should. We've got, um, what's nineteen old digital radios that I want to dispose of. There's eight mobile radios and eleven old portable radios. These are. From when we went digital radios, these are probably second or third generation and we've moved on from these and they're, they're not upgradable anymore. Um, they don't serve any purpose. I've spoken to Sioux Falls two way and they would take them and recycle them for us, which means they. Deprogram them and send them back to the factory. I don't, I assume that they get a little something for that. I think Lane has the ability now to deprogram them, but they're, otherwise there would be a cost to have them do that if we wanted to try to sell them. On a sale, which I'm confident we would end up throwing them in garbage after that sale because nobody's going to buy them. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to see about getting those, uh, declared surplus so I could turn them over Sioux Falls two way, get them out of our building here.
I moved to declare these radio surplus.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll probably try to do this a little every so often now as we kind of gather up junk and clear it out. So, thank you.
Cut the, cut our moving costs.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Let's see, Lanaya. Oh, boy.
Good morning. So hopefully I've gathered some fun information for you for my review. We'll see. Um, so did everyone get the, the document? I do have some numbers that I swish, just. Slipped my mind. I have to correct some of those, like ran two years of data instead of one year, that kind of thing, but, um, kind of starting at the top. We had a new sales audit this year with the state. They have a new system online, so that was completed remotely. Um, and I think it went well. We started out before our audit, we were, um. Our assessment ratio was seventy two percent of market and then after reviewing some, some of the sales, there were some, you know, where. Half the house was sketched in as an open porch instead of living space. And so we got us up to seventy six percent, which is still kind of low on the. End of market things. We're supposed to be at bare minimum at eighty five. So after our reappraisal amounts, we ended up at, by my numbers, ninety one percent. So we are assessing at ninety one percent of market value. That's kind of our level of assessment. The other thing that we measure is our quality of assessment with a, it's called a coefficient of dispersion. Um, and this actually made me pretty proud of our office and what we accomplished. I've worked them really hard through all the construction, a lot of. Days where I made them be here while they were drilling. But our coefficient of dispersion by state law needs to be less than twenty five. And, um, as you can see on that document, the last few years, it's been hanging pretty steady at nineteen. This year we got it down to fifteen point nine five and I'm really proud of.
Would you define that briefly just for the record here?
Yep. So it's your. Yep, so it's your quality of assessment, it is how far your sales deviate from your median sale ratio. So it's basically, um. And kind of grouping them in a closer cluster, so it's your quality of assessment. Um, making sure that your sales ratios are all within that ninety one percent by a certain amount.
That makes sense.
Versus, you know, a widespread, I think when we started, um. So like a good eighty percent of our sales were under eighty five percent. Um, so kinda bringing them to ninety one, we didn't just take all of our sales and move them up to ninety one, we clustered them a little closer to ninety one. So that fifteen, the lower it is, the better, um, I went to. School last fall for sales ratio, which was very enlightening and very helpful, I think Pennington County said that they hover around an eight. For their coefficient of dispersion, so that, that would be a good goal, I think, kind of comparing to those, I'm not sure what Lincoln County is at, but. Or Minnehaha, but, um, the fact that we were able to bring it from that nineteen down to the fifteen, I think is a good indication that our staff is, um. Getting to a better quality of assessment, in addition to moving our median from seventy two up to ninety one.
It's definitely something I worry about in conversations, you know, when you're discussing somebody's, people pull me aside all the time and talk about their. Assessment and where it's gone and things like that, and that's always a, you know, as on a rotating basis, as you're making your way around the county. If everything kinda jumps up in a year and it takes you five years to get around to that last house, that person's getting a deal, you know, and whoever gets hit the first year is. Is, you know, having to carry the burden for longer, so getting that, that coefficient down seems like a real. Real benefit broadly across the county for people, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
That's quite a compliment.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and kind of looking at market, I know it's further down, um, I actually gave you guys only the non-ag sales. So I have, um, a hundred and sixty one non-ag sales, which was down sixty six sales compared to last year. So not only are we dealing with a volatile market, we're dealing with less volume of sales, we are not seeing that sale. Price come down, everyone says, well, the market's going down. It's not.
Rate of increase is going down.
There's less selling, but again, starting at seventy two percent, like we're still seeing that there's, the, the values are still going up. Um, but overall, if you include ag sales in that, we had a hundred and seventy six open market sales last year. As compared to two hundred and forty nine the year before, so that's down seventy three sales overall for our. Open market study.
How does this compare to, so we had, we had a couple of real hot years in there, so how does this compare to historically, is this, are we kind of. Getting back towards a trend, uh, or like, like what had been kind of a normal trend, or are we, are we, uh, you know, is this low?
That's a tricky question, cuz I've only been here for three years.
Yeah.
And I didn't look that far back, yeah.
Yeah, and then just based on valuation.
Yeah.
Um, when we started the, the jail discussion. I wanna say that, I mean, when we were gonna go to a vote, I think that was in nineteen, we were just above a billion dollars in assessed value. Now we're at one point seven, so in six years. Yeah, it's, it's jumped.
Yeah, yeah, so you can see there on kind of the activity column, I do have, um, our total tax, or it's not. Taxable value, it's assessed value, cuz we don't have our taxable factors yet from the state, but it is, um. One billion, seven hundred and three million, four hundred and seventy four thousand, three thirteen, so that's here. That's our assessed value currently before we equalize it back to a taxable.
And just to make sure I'm interpreting all your figures here correctly, so then you've got a line for growth and a line for reappraisal, so reappraisal is additional value. That's added by reappraising existing properties, that doesn't affect our growth. Factor for the year, right, and then growth is new structures in the county and that's, that's the sixteen, sixteen million about, so.
Yeah, yep, yep, so our growth was down by two point six million, but our reappraisal was up by fifty million, so. A lot less on the building permit, if you see, we also were down about ninety six building permits, we had three hundred and fifteen that we reviewed. In the past year, um, but kinda jumping that reappraisal, we did raise all homes in the county by eighteen percent. That's what the market indicated, um, all of our non-ag land went up fifteen percent. We raised all of our urban land fifteen percent as well, and I raised ag buildings by three percent.
Now the eighteen percent, that is on an average, right?
Yes, yeah, well.
Cause some houses went up more.
Yes, yep, so we, in our reappraisal area, we did Garfield, Pleasant Valley and Bethel. So those three townships were most likely to see increases over eighteen percent, just because we were reappraising them. For the first time, and I believe it was fourteen years since we'd been out there, um, I, Ina did a really good job of setting us up with a seven year plan. And so far, we've been able to stick to that.
So, so does the eighteen percent then represent kind of a, a, across the board baseline, every, every value, if you were a hundred thousand, you're a hundred and eighteen thousand. And then in certain areas, you also did reappraisals, and so those likely bumped a few up, maybe a few down a little bit, but, but I'm getting that right, everybody. And, and if I'm thinking through the math right, if every single property, I mean, I guess it's not true because. The, uh, the Clay County homes are only a portion of the total value in the property, in the county, right, so if, if all these numbers have been eighteen percent. Nobody's levy would go up, people's houses levies are gonna go up a little bit relative to ag buildings, urban land. Non-ag land, so those are, those are gonna make up a little bit less of the tax base, so, so because of that shift a little bit, there'll be a little bit of a additional levy, right? Or additional, uh, property tax bill at the end of the year for a, for someone with a home.
Reappraisal should not affect your tax levy.
Okay.
When I reappraise your mill levy should go down.
Yeah, I'm misspeaking, I apologize, yeah.
I, I've been banking on that this year, but it, it never happens, um. I would love it if the mill levy went down to reflect this steep increase that I had to do due to the market. Um, but every time budgeting entities ask for more money, your mill levy increases. Um, we did see quite a few areas where the mill levy went down last year, I think we did just a ten percent raise overall, but. Reviewed a couple townships last year as well, um, and then growth is the other thing that should offset that mill levy and bring it down a little bit. So that's, that's kind of why I, I strongly feel that you should not look just at your assessed value when coming up with your budget. You should look at what your budget was the year before, and then what you need to increase accordingly, not even thinking of your values. So that's, that's my personal opinion coming from my office, but, um. So kinda moving through that, the other big changes we saw were within ag land, um, you may remember from boards last year, we were working on. Coming off of actual use and getting to true productivity, um, that was a state directive back in two thousand nine that we kind of. Skirted around, um, so this year we updated our ag land, all class one, two and three soils are now listed as crop. And all class five, six, seven and eight soils are listed as pasture, as the state says they should be, so I think that's another thing that. Um, helps our coefficient of dispersion as well. Um, so this year's plans for review, we are reviewing Star Riverside and Glenwood, so the north three counters. Counties and then we'll kind of be through our rural review, um, we haven't done Irene, Star or Vermillion commercial yet. So that would kind of be hopefully the next year's plan. Um, we are anticipating some ag land adjustments, we had some appeals based on that, and so I'll be sending out, um. Forms to the people that did appeal to kind of adjust those one, twos and threes that maybe can't be used as crop, um, for some reason. And then we're also, um, anticipating next spring, we will have a new Eagle View flyover. Or pictometry, as you guys may know it, um, so we'll have new aerial imagery and change finder next year as well, so that's kinda coming down the pipeline this fall. We'll probably start looking at, um, contracts for those, so. So when we move on to kind of our software that we offer.
Ask you one more question before I get, sorry, I, I was just, uh, uh, when, so the, the homes went up eighteen. Uh, non-ag rural land went up fifteen, urban land went up fifteen, was the, the decision to. Raise the ag buildings only by three percent, just that those were closer to market valuation, so they didn't require as much of a factor, is that right?
And I think part of that is when you look at our ag building sites that sell, um, we have very few that are open market, a lot of time it's, it's to family, but. Even those, um, people are paying more for those machine sheds, old buildings, that kind of thing. Um, so those definitely needed to be increased slightly.
But, but less, because, because they were, the, the valuations were closer to what?
Yeah.
What the market rate should be, right?
Yep.
Okay, just make sure.
So when, when I do our market study, I do break everything out by its abstract class and look at it that way, so.
Thank you.
If that helps. So going into our software, our beacon subscriptions were down by four, um, a lot of that we're seeing, there's some of our. Longtime appraisers are retiring, um, they maybe have one or two families they still work with and do smaller projects, so they come into the office instead. Um, and you can see that our site visits were down and views and the customer service desk, I think a lot of that is also due to. Lower volume of sales, we often see like our top looked at parcels are the ones that have been on the market for. A while or have high interest, um, pictometry though was up, and this is the one that I ran a two year report instead of a one year report. And I apologize for that, um, so our logins were actually five thousand, nine hundred and nine logins. Um, so it was up by four thousand, and then we had nine thousand, one hundred and thirty eight images viewed. Which was actually down by quite a bit, I think that's because we're on our third year of our flyover, so there aren't as many, um. The images are getting old, I guess is the best way to say it, um, but overall, I think that. Our pictometry use was up, not only due to growth in the county, but we had a luncheon learn last May that was quite successful, I think it helped people. Understand what the software is and how to use it, um, so I'm looking at ho- holding another one of those this fall and information on that will be coming, so. Then on the backside, we kinda jump into appeals, um, which are coming up next week, the townships had twenty eight appeals total. Um. For looking at ours, what we have coming up, consolidated board, we're looking at two appeals, five recommendations, so seven total for consolidated. And then county board, we just had another one come in today as the last date of postmark, so this number may change yet, um. But we have three appeals at the county board, two recommendations, um, and then I'm appealing for local decisions. So that's total, what is that, nine, nine at the county board level, so, um. We've got conference coming up in June, be the fourth through the seventh, um, Melissa and I will go. And then in school will be September fifteenth through the twentieth in Oklahoma, um, again, Melissa and I will attend that one. Hopefully we'll have a new hire by that point, that's a while away, but they haven't announced the dates for basics yet, that'll be in October. Um. Sort of general information, we had one sort of found property, it was unassessed in Wakanda and found that and added it to the. Assessment rules. And then as far as hiring goes, we've had six applicants, um, that's slowly moving along, I'm really hoping for the right person. So we've been posting on Facebook, if you're active on there, you can certainly share that, um, just spread the word that we're, we need, we need someone who's willing to. Take on a lot, there's a lot in this job, it's ever changing, um, and then. While we're waiting for somebody, Ina has agreed to come in and kind of babysit the office when we have stuff, um, when we need to go out. I budgeted a hundred and twenty hours, um, to pay her for, she's at one hundred and eight currently for this year. Kinda helping us finish up the GIS projects we had, um, so with the change from where. Kyle was at to the new applicant, I have room in my budget for her to work two hundred and seventy additional hours, I hope I don't need to use her for that. Much cuz that's a lot of time, but I do have room in the budget to kind of cover, um. We're hoping when we start reappraisal this summer, I can go out with both Melissa and the new hire, um, just to kind of. Get everybody familiar with sort of those policies and how we, how we go about it, so, um, that's the appraisal side of it. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is I am looking at updating our fee schedule. One of the reasons we've had some of our beacon subscribers, um, drop is because they don't have as many projects and they don't want to pay for the full year. Um, Yankton, Lincoln, Union, a lot of the surrounding counties have added monthly and quarterly beacon options, um. And so I, I did do a new fee schedule to kind of add those options. And it would be, if you wanted a quarterly subscription, it would be a hundred dollars with the initial twenty five dollar setup fee. And then the monthly would be forty dollars with the initial twenty five dollar setup fee, um, so the very first time we set someone up, there's just a little more legwork involved. Making sure they have an account, setting it up, anytime after that, it's easier to just kind of hit a button and it goes.
So the one time setup fee is really one time, they can let their subscription lapse and they won't pay that again.
Yeah, yeah, so if, if you guys are agreeable to that, I'd like to go ahead with beacon and get monthly and quarterly options up on the. Up on the site, I think that will bring, we've had a lot of interest in the monthly since Lincoln County added it, and so. I think that would help our office as well, um, they can go on there for a month and get all the record cards they need, it takes a little bit of. The busy work in our office away from us as we're down a person, so it would be helpful. The other thing is with shape files, GIS, we have a lot of GIS training ahead of us, we haven't had really a full-time GIS since Laura retired. Um, it's been, that's part of why Ina has come back and helped with so much, and so I would like to increase our shape file amounts. Um, for an individual layer, it would go from a hundred up to one twenty five, and the main format, which includes five different layers. Um, would go from three hundred up to four hundred, so just increasing those to kind of appropriately. Recognize the time and effort or it takes our office.
Yeah.
Yep.
So are these fees formally set by us, is it something that requires a mo- motion?
I believe so, the last resolution I had in my office was twenty thirteen, so if you wanted to.
I, I moved to approve, uh, the fee schedule presented by Linnea.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the fee schedule, did you, do you want me to repeat it back or you got it?
I got it.
Okay.
Second, second.
And there was a second, um, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, kind of the last thing I had for you, I think Carrie distributed them, but, um, the Department of Revenue puts together some really nice guides. For both, um, local consolidated county boards and for property owners, um, I think she sent those to you, I would appreciate it if you. Could take time to read over both of those before our boards next week, I think they're very educational, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Especially going into a year with that eighteen percent increase, it's helpful to kind of see what responsibilities fall on.
Think I read it last year and I'm definitely gonna read it again, cuz I do not remember the, all the details, so.
And if you want a hard copy, I, I can print them out in the office on your way out, so. Any other questions today?
No, it really well, well presented, thank you, gives us a good picture of what's going on on the ground.
Yeah, good, alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linnea. Alright. Um, so vouchers.
Move to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we've got a quote from Erickson Solutions, and I have to confess. I, uh, wasn't sure what all this stuff is.
So, I was gonna explain that anyway. This is all, um, hardware and associated work and things that they'll have to do with the renovation. Um, there were some things that. Obviously, we're not in like the L and L builders quote, because they were things that Erickson's was gonna have to take care of for us. Um, basically this gets us up to where we need to be and we hopefully won't have to replace any hardware. Any parts, things like that for another couple few years then. Puts us in a good position with our cybersecurity.
Okay.
So when we, when some of those offices move into the old jail, our old police department. That's all we can.
Can, you know, if it, if it needs to go, it can go, you know, with them. So.
Alright, so then we would need to authorize, um, the chair to sign. Um, let's see, a quote, um, agree to a quote, um, in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred. Eighty four dollars and forty four cents.
So moved, second.
Some motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, any Clay County Park business?
Uh, nothing new today.
Um, building projects, business? Building projects?
They, I don't know. They slowed down a little bit. We have a meeting tomorrow. I don't know if they're waiting for the walls. It must be the only thing slowing down. It just doesn't look like in the last week, many walls have went up, so.
In the mud.
Mud. They've built that site up pretty good now, though.
Yeah. It drains well, doesn't it?
Well, there's a lot of rock in there.
Yeah.
All right. Joint jurisdiction updates? Yep.
Okay. Uh, then we need an executive session, um, for personnel matters.
Move to go into executive session for personnel matters. Second.
So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in executive session.
So a motion to come out of executive session.
Sure.
Second.
So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.